Welcome to the Liberty County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting. You second. Mr. Mosley, has the meeting been properly advertised? Is Mr. Donahue back there?
Yes, sir.
Is he?
He said he wouldn't be here.
Okay, good. Okay, we'll have the prayer and pledge led by Bishop Kendall Page. Let us all stand, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Most holy and righteous God, we come to you this evening and thank you for this day. Thank you for this meeting. Thank you for the county commissioners and their families and their assistance for every presenter tonight. Give the county commissioners the wisdom they need to make the right decisions for Liberty County. It's in Jesus's name we do pray and give you praise. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bishop. Mr. Mosley, before we get started, I do want to bring a message from Commissioner Walden. I spoke with him yesterday. He's in town. He's home resting, still recuperating. I want everybody to know that, you know, he's accepting the phone calls. If you want to give him a call, then he'd probably have to go back to Savannah. I mean, he went to Savannah this week. He probably got to go back to Atlanta in a couple of weeks, but he's doing real well. And just continue to pray for him.
Good.
Okay, now the approval of November minutes. If you had a chance to take a look at them.
Vice Chair, I'll make that motion.
I second. I second. If you have a motion and a second, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Proclamation. Bring one for the chipper, Dr. Karen Bell.
You're doing a great job, sir.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. Bring One For The Chipper is one of the events that gives your Christmas tree, your live Christmas tree, a second chance. It's the event that's been around for over three decades, and they help Georgia, it's a Georgia program, recycle their trees since 1991. We have diverted over six million trees from the landfill, and that's either been chipped or they have either been put into ponds for fish or made into wonderful dirt like we do here at Liberty County. When you purchase your live tree, either from a tree farm or from one of the stores, we just ask that instead of just throwing it away, to actually recycle it and bring it to the recycling event, which is January the 3rd, 2026, from nine to one, we will have over 300 trees to give away. So if you give us a tree, you don't even have to give us a tree. If you show up, we gonna give you a tree, and we have some vegetables and flower seeds that you're able to get also. We're also going to have a recycler fair on the same day at the same location in Heinzville, and that's where you can bring all of your household hazard items like your batteries, clothes, shoes, paint, oil, electronics. So when you get the new phones or electronics, you can bring your old one to us, and we'll make sure it get recycled in the proper way.
Mr. Mosley, you have a proclamation you need to read?
Yes, sir. Proclamation, Bring One For The Chipper. Whereas recycling reduces the waste stream thus saving tax dollars and improving our environment, and whereas Liberty County is committed to reducing the waste stream, thus helping the state of Georgia reach a per capita waste disposal reduction goal, and whereas the Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation, the Home Depot, Davery Tree Expert Company, Georgia Forestry Commission, WXIA Living Alive, Fairy Morse Company, and Burpee Seed Company are sponsoring the 35th year of Bring One For The Chipper Tree Recycling Program. And whereas this program promotes the recycling of Christmas trees into usable mulch material and provide county residents ease access to drop-off sites, now therefore be resolved that the Liberty County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim Saturday, January the 3rd, 2026 as the Bring One For The Chipper Day in Liberty County, duly entered into the minutes of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners this 12th month of the second day of the year 2025.
Okay. Do we need to take a picture?
And I'm sorry, I didn't introduce my board member, Ms. Brittany Fox, and I'm Dr. Karen Bell, the executive director for Keep Liberty.
Okay. If y'all come up, we'll take the picture. Okay, next we have the department reports. Mr. Richardson from LCPC.
Mr. Chair, would you entertain a motion to go into a public hearing?
Yes, sir. Motion has been made and seconded for the going to public hearing. All in favor? All in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Who seconded? Okay. Go ahead, Jeff.
Good evening, Vice Chairman, members of the board. Our first rezoning petition tonight is 2025-45LC. This is a petition that's been submitted by Jall Services LLC, Justin Webb, to rezone 6.92 acres of property from AR1 agricultural residential to C3 highway commercial. This is located on Highway 196 West. It's next to Russell Geyat's pay-to-part lot that y'all rezoned a few years ago. You can see there the parcel number is 036-D81. Next slide. Oh, I can, I'm sorry. I'm driving here. Okay, so this is an ad that we ran in the Coastal Courier and the sign that's located on the property. And this is the vicinity map just showing the outline of the property. Mr. Webb also owns the property here in front, so this would be a continuation of his ownership property going back into the back. This is the Geyat pay-to-part property located adjacent to it. And this is the, of course, you can see the Geyat property, the zone C3. He's asking for this property to be C3 as well, which would join with the property that he has currently here with a small warehouse building on it. And this is the future land use plan that you all adopted recently. It shows the frontage of the property being mixed-use, which would be compatible with the C3 zoning. The rear portion of the property is shown for low-density residential. So it's just, the comp plan says yes and no on this one. The flood map, you can see there are some flood plains back in the very rear of the property, adjacent to Griffin Park subdivision here in the city of Heinzville. But majority of the property is in uplands and not in the flood plain. And you can see the wetlands. There is some wetlands on the rear part of the property that wouldn't be able to develop back in that area. So really, this is the really developable piece of property. And the narrative, it just says the purpose of this rezoning is to combine the property with the other piece that I've already showed you that he owns as well. Their goal would be to have one larger tract zone C3 to help boost the property values for any potential future sales or endeavors. They also have plans to possibly clear one to three acres of land toward the front to place a warehouse for their contractors to store their extra materials and supplies for their investment properties. They're in the rental business. And this is just a picture of the building that's on the front and some other storage apparatus that they have there on the property. The property in question is back in the back, the tree-covered area back there. And it's just another photograph of the existing building. Our zoning analysis, does this property have reasonable economic value as it's currently zoned? It does. Number two, does the property conform, does the proposed use conform to the Fort Stewart joint land use study? It does. Number three, does the proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? Our answer there is yes and no. You saw on that map earlier that the back part of the property is shown for low-density residential, but the front property is definitely within the mixed-use urban corridor, which would be compatible with the C3 zoning that he's asking for. Number four, will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? No. Is the proposed use suitable in view of nearby properties? We answered yes. Number six, will the zoning proposal create undue burden on transportation, including streets, transit, schools, utilities, and public safety? We answered no. Number seven, will this allow for a short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals? It would not. Number eight, would this change cause a domino effect? It would not. The dominos are already moving in this general area because of the property next door that was recently rezoned for C3. Number nine, are there unique historical sites which would be adversely impacted? We have not noted any. Number 10, is this parcel in a flood hazard area? You saw on the map earlier that a portion of the property, the rear portion of the property is in a flood zone A. Number 11, is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? It is not. And number 12, are there unique conditions which support approval or denial? And we've answered there, as the owner proposes to combine the two lots, having one zoning district would be preferable. Our planning commission heard this last month, and they recommend approval with standard and special conditions. And the special conditions would be to recombine the two lots. Recombine this with the front piece that he has and just make it one lot. And then number two, a 50-foot vegetative buffer along all residential properties would be required. They recommend that you put both of those special conditions on this. Mr. Webb is here, and this has been advertised as a public hearing, but I would be glad to answer any questions from you before you open it up.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Jeff?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, that is in my district there, and I just had a couple of questions. What, I think the Honeybee Lane, I guess, is the only residential property. Was he opposed or any opposition?
Yes, the property owner that lives in this property right here did come in and expressed concern. That's why the planning commission recommended a 50-foot buffer along the property line for any development that would take place there.
Okay. And also, Mr. Webb?
Yes, ma'am.
I know it's just for rezoning tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
I know it's just for rezoning tonight, but how are you planning to get in and out from that? May I help him with that? Are we coming through where you've already, where the house is up front?
Yes, ma'am. Once I combine these two properties, I'll be coming right there along the side of it. Yes, ma'am. There's already an access driveway.
To the rear of the property?
Right there, there's a driveway, so probably right there along the side of the house or the, yes, ma'am, or the building. And to access it. Right through there.
And the warehousing, I guess that would come later?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson? Would that come?
He would.
If the zoning is approved, he would have to come in and submit building plans for the warehouse, a site plan and building plans, and they would be reviewed by the county.
Okay. Okay.
And Commissioner, with regard to your question about the driveway, he would have to apply to GDOT and get a commercial driveway for this piece of property.
Yeah, I know that the property owner beside him that's storing those trailers don't have that. I don't know how he got.
To get approval from the county for the commercial, the warehouse, he would have to get a GDOT driveway permit.
Okay. That's what I want to make sure of that also. Okay.
Any other commissioners have any questions for Mr. Richardson? Okay, now, before we open up for public comment, I'm going to establish a little bit of ground rules. Anyone that wants to come and speak for or against, we're going to limit your comments to three minutes. These petitions, and that's on all three of these zoning petitions, they've been reviewed and vetted over at the planning commission at Jeff's office, and we've had this information in our email packets for over a week, so we've also taken a look at them, and we're going to take action on it tonight. But anyone that wants to come up, please limit your comments to three minutes. I won't stop you in mid-sentence, but I won't allow you to go much longer than three minutes. So if we have anybody in favor, did you have any, anyone sign up for this particular?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mike Cook.
Mike Cook, passed? Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone against? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that we approve with the standard, I'm sorry, did you have?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If we can just go through all of the petitions, and I think we need to come out of.
Before we come out, before we vote?
Absolutely.
Okay. No more discussion on it? Have a motion to come out of public hearing?
Second. Second.
We have a motion?
I made a motion, he made a second.
Oh, to come out?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion to come out? Okay. All in favor? Ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
There we go.
Make a motion for approval with the standard conditions.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
And the vegetation.
And the special conditions.
And the special conditions, yes, sir.
Got a motion and a second. Everybody ready to vote? All in favor, vote aye. Raise your hand. Okay. Okay, go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, our next petition has been submitted by William and Lynn Weiss to rezone 1.73 acres of property from.
Chair, you have to go back in.
Back in the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Make that motion.
Could we have a motion to go back in the public hearing?
Make a motion.
Second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor to go back in the public hearing? Raise your hand. Okay. All right, Jeff.
This is a petition that's been submitted by William and Lynn Weiss to rezone 1.73 acres of property from R12 single-family residential to AR1 agricultural residential for a small backyard chicken flock. Property is located at 112 Oak Island Drive in unincorporated Liberty County, and you can see the parcel number listed below. You can see the ad that we ran in the Coastal Courier and the sign located on the property advertising tonight's public hearing. And this is a vicinity map. You can see that this is a residentially developed area, and this is, the property is located right here. And that's just a vicinity map just showing the houses here. They've got a little bit of marshland in the rear part of the property, but they're clearly part of a residential subdivision. And you can see the zoning map here. You can see this property is zoned, R12, as is all the property around it. And you can see the, this is what the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan calls for. It calls for single-family residential development in this area. Flood map, you can see that this whole piece of property here is zoned in the AE flood zone, which is, it is in the 20-year flood, I mean, the 100-year flood plain. And you can see there is a portion of wetlands, that is the marsh area back in the rear of the property. In the narrative, it just basically says that they would like to have a backyard chicken flock as part of their residential use. The residential use is the primary use. They previously had some chickens in the backyard, and they were asked to remove them, and they have removed them, but they would like to rezone the property for residential in hopes of getting a, restoring the chickens to the property. And this is their proposed layout. And this is their proposed layout with the house here, the garage here, the chicken coop is still, the previous, the chicken coop that was previously used is still there, adjacent to a carport that's existing on the property. You can see the marsh out here in the rear of the property. And there is a photograph of the chicken coop. And just the garage, the carport structure adjacent to that. And you can see the marsh looking back away from the chicken coop. Our zoning analysis, does this property have reasonable economic value as it's currently zoned? It does. Number two, does the proposed use conform to the joint land use study? It does. Number three, does the proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? We've answered that yes. The Comprehensive Plan designates this property as future land use residential low density in which AR would be a compatible zoning district. Number four, will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? We've answered yes to that, as chickens cannot be kept within 300 feet of any place, any building or, any building where people reside or work. And this is a section out of the Liberty County Ordinance, it's under the Animal Ordinance, it's not part of the U D O, but it is, it clearly says in county subdivisions, it's unlawful for anybody to keep any pen or coop or enclosure for animals within 300 feet of any house or building where people reside or work. So regardless of whether you approve this rezoning tonight or not, they would not be able to have the chickens, so the zoning, zoning action tonight won't really cure the chicken problem. Next slide, is the proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? We answered no, it's not, as the chickens will be too close to neighboring residences we've actually measured from all locations on this property, and there's no way you can put a chicken coop there that would meet the 300-foot distance requirement from the surrounding houses. So that, we mentioned that one, that it would not be suitable because of that requirement in the ordinance. Number six, will the zoning proposal create undue burden on transportation, streets, public schools, utilities, and public safety? It would not. Number seven, would this allow a short-term gain at the expense of our local long-term goals? It would, because it's not allowed under the Animal Ordinance. Number eight, would this change cause a domino effect? It would, because others would want to come in and do the same thing. Number nine, are there unique historical sites which may be adversely impacted? We have not identified any. Number 10, is this parcel in a flood hazard zone? Yes, you saw on the map earlier that the whole property is located in an AE flood hazard zone. Number 11, is it spot zoning or unrelated to the existing pattern of development? If you zoned this property A 1, it would be an AR 1 property in the middle of an area that's zoned R 12, so it would definitely be a spot zone. And number 12, are there unique conditions with support approval or denial? And we've answered yes, as the proposed use is prohibited in the Animal Ordinance, Section 6.7, regardless of what the zoning is. So the planning commission heard this at their last meeting, and they recommended disapproval. So the applicant, Mr. Weiss is here, and this has been advertised as a public hearing, but I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
I have one question, Jeff, before we go into the public hearing. Could you go back to the picture, I think you said one of them had the picture of a coop, yeah, right there. Which one of those is the coop?
This is the coop, and this is the pen, I guess they, this is the outdoor area, and that's where they have the nest for laying eggs, collecting eggs.
I mean, I ask that, because I'm kind of an urban cowboy, never, never really been outside of this, it was asphalt, that, and that sort of little shed in the back, the beige-looking building, that's where the chickens, that's the coop.
That's where, that's where the nests are and where they gather the eggs. This is just the enclosure where the chickens can roam around in the yard.
And where this one is right now, is that within the distance requirement from the owner's house?
From the owner's house? No, it would not be, it would definitely not be within the distance requirements of the owner's house, and it's not within the distance requirements of the neighbor's house either.
Okay. Okay. Anybody else got any questions for Jeff?
Jeff, what was the vote? Was it unanimous vote at LCPC or?
I was not at the LCPC meeting when they met, but I'm pretty sure it was unanimous vote, and I don't think there was dissent on that.
Mr. Weiss, Jeff, one thing, Mr. Richardson, let me mention something to you. A while back, we asked for the minutes, the votes, was it four to two, five to two? And also, we asked for the districts to be inside, on our report. Now, I have attended some of Hinesville City Council meeting, and they received the information like this. We would like to receive that same information over here.
Okay, I will definitely do that.
Anyone else for Jeff?
No.
I'd like to make a motion that we go and open up for public hearing.
So move.
You're already there?
We're in public hearing, yeah.
Okay, do you have anyone to sign up?
Yes, sir. I have William and Lynn Weiss, Ben and Christine Banks, Mike Cook, and Marjorie Zaharto-Harko.
Okay, you can come in at order, and again, the rules that I spoke of earlier still apply.
Good evening, my name's William Weiss, and if I could clarify Commissioner Stevens' question, there was one vote against as compared to all, the others were four during the voting process during the LCPC meeting. So there was one, well, actually, there was, it wasn't, it wasn't a unanimous vote, okay? I see the confusion there. One voted in favor of our request as compared to the disapproval. Okay, just to clarify that point.
Okay.
If I could start with a brief statement, and then I'd be happy to answer your questions. This has been a process that's been going on for us now for pretty much over a year. Since our initial meeting with Commissioner Blunt and at the time County Commissioner Brown in January 2025, we've received no direct feedback on the commission's position concerning the backyard chickens. It's just been silent. Instead, the comments that we've been offered are that this is a Lake George problem, that the other districts in the county do not face this problem, and most troubling, the suggestion to wait until the dust settles, build a fence, and put the chickens in the backyard. These remarks, while noted, don't provide the clarity or guidance that citizens deserve when seeking to comply with county ordinances and pursue lawful efforts to update the court of ordinances. The absence of a formal position leaves residents uncertain, undermines the confidence in the process, and risks inconsistent application of standards across the districts. To ignore a citizen's request for a petition, to petition their elected officials is a violation of their constitutional rights. Therefore, I feel to date that my First Amendment rights have been infringed upon, both here with the commission and also during the process with the magistrate court. Concerning my request, I meet the requirements for complementary property types, but not the section of the current municipal codes, which falls in under nuisance animals. The part of that ordinance that's often kind of glossed over is it also applies to kennelled dogs. Now, dogs are a far greater problem within the county than chickens to date, but nobody ever seems to talk about that portion of it. So in that ordinance, the chickens and the kennels for multiple dogs must be 300 feet from human inhabited structures within a subdivision. The broad nature of the code, as it's currently stated, places that most properties under five acres within the county would be in jeopardy of being noncompliant regardless of their zoning designation. This is based off of what the state of Georgia recognizes as a subdivision. During our initial meeting, the explanation for the 300-foot distance was that it was created sometime back in the 1980s. Myself, I believe it's time for a change. I urge the commission to return to the table to discuss, to establish a plan to address the citizens' desire to maintain backyard chickens and develop an updated ordinance that creates a transparent, consistent policy regarding the backyard chicken flocks. This issue is not confined to one neighborhood. It reflects a broader question of property rights, community standards, and responsible governance. Clear guidance would allow residents to act prudently, respect their neighbors, and enjoy the same quality of life that is enjoyed throughout Georgia and the country at large. Respectful dialogue and transparent decision-making are the cornerstones of good governance, and I trust the commission will uphold these principles. Thank you. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? No questions, all right, thanks for your comment.
All right.
Oh, hold on, we have one.
I heard everything you said, it is pretty accurate, except for a little bit. Didn't you call me and I come met with you at your house and we discussed some of this?
We did, and that was where some of the same information, I believe it was you that said, just wait till the dust settles. And I understand that's a common thing, hey, you know, it's worked in the past, it's not gonna work as we continue to build out.
Let me finish.
Okay, I'm sorry.
All right. So we talked about this, and I know you and some others have come up here several times wanting to talk to us, but I give you some advice to go to LCPC, and you have, and that's the way you've got to get in front of us, right here and everything. But I just wanted to set the record straight. I have reached out and come to you-
Oh, yes, sir, yes, you have.
And everything, and I didn't want it to go that we've just ignored you and everything. I've talked to you, and we'll talk some more, but go ahead and let the rest of them come up if you want to.
Personally, I mean, everybody tends to think that this is just a Lake George problem. It's not, and if you don't want to listen to me, listen to your employees, because they bother me endlessly about the problems, and more importantly, my wife, who's on the internet side of it there. We have a petition with how many? 750 names on it within Liberty County, 85 just within Lake George.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Weiss.
So it's a process, you know, that needs to be looked at. From my standpoint, I'd be happy if we could just set a date where we could get back down and set and develop a standard that Atlanta and Savannah and many other areas throughout Georgia already enjoy. The 300-foot distance in Columbus, Georgia, I can have poisonous snakes. Generally, the setback in most other places throughout the state of Georgia is anywhere from 15 to 50 feet from the property line.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Weiss. Do we have, who's next, Mr. Mosley?
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mike Cook.
Mr. Mike Cook.
I'm actually, my name is Michael Cook, I don't, I live in District 1, but I'm familiar with this particular case because it was on the agenda the last time I was in here for the rezoning that happened across the street from me, which was SNF wanting to put in warehouses. Our land is our land, I mean, in a nutshell, and I support it, you know? I don't have chickens right now, but I do have chickens, I have had chickens. I don't have kennels, but I have multiple dogs, and I don't like certain individuals by virtue of their duty positions telling me I can't do something. It just goes against my nature. After having served 20 years in the military to support y'all, I'm having a lot shoved down my throat, and so are the people around here, and we're generally tired of it. So, you know, a little bit of swaging the way, are there anybody here that says that this is unacceptable, other than y'all or LCPC? Is there anybody? I mean, a small chicken pen, as long as they're not allowed to run free, it, you know, what difference does it make? It's not a health issue. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
And Christine Banks?
Ms. Banks? Ms. Banks?
Hey, good afternoon, I'll be pretty brief. So we've fought this every angle we know how to, and it's quite frankly kind of embarrassing that we've spent so much time just trying to have chickens in our backyard. I live just down the street from Bill and Lynn, and, you know, my chickens never went out and pooped in my neighbor's yard, they stayed confined in a clean pen, just like Bill's did, just like so many people across this county have chickens today against the county ordinance, but they're not, the difference between them and Bill and I are, we got reported and they haven't. So the county code has been weaponized against us, and likely everyone in this room, if I went to your house, I could probably pull out that code book and find something wrong with every single person's house in this, in this room today. And what we're asking for, I mean, we're just looking for avenues, right? We're looking for help, and just if this isn't allowed, or it sounds like even if it is allowed, he can't have chickens anyway, just work with us on a common sense resolution to give us the freedom to have chickens responsibly, safely, not flying all over the place and going all over the, you know, I've cleaned up dog mess in my front yard, I've never cleaned up Bill's chicken mess, you know, it's, it's not a plaguing issue. I mean, this is, it's really quite simple, and like Bill said, this, this issue's been solved all across Georgia, all across the nation, it's more and more municipalities adopting and amending codes that allow this in a reasonable manner, and I can't understand why we've had to fight so hard just for such a simple request. So it's just, it's just really frustrating at this point, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for allowing us all to speak tonight and hearing our position on the, on the chicken issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Mr. Mosley?
Marjorie Zaharto-Harko?
Ms. Rocko.
Can you come up, please?
I just want to echo my predecessors on this issue. I don't have anything else to say, I think they've spoken eloquently about our stand.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else, Mr. Mosley? Okay. I'll, I'll say this, before we came out here, Commissioner Blunt was speaking with the attorney, and he did mention that he was gonna revisit the issue somewhat with Mr. Richardson from LCPC, and I'm quite sure he'll do that, and maybe he'll reach out to you all once, once he have that meeting, or maybe he'll even invite you to the meeting, that's strictly up to him. That, that's everybody, Joe? That closes the public hearing?
May I, may I speak before we close it?
Does she sign up? No, okay. Well, no, 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 ma'am, no, ma'am, no, ma'am, we're good with that. Okay. Very. Okay, we have a motion to come out of public hearing?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Chairman, just to reiterate, this is a request to rezone the property, it won't, no matter what you do tonight, it's not going to change the fact that chickens are not allowed on this property, so that's a separate issue, but-
But I may have stated it right there on the presentation.
But the planning commission recommended disapproval of the rezoning.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Richardson? Ready for a motion?
I make a motion that we follow LCPC recommendation for disapproval. I'll leave it short and simple on that. I want to add one little thing. As Mr. Giger just said, me and Jeff have talked, me and Kelly Davis have talked, probably by maybe the midterm December, we're gonna relook at that 300-foot ordinance and all. I was advised by Kelly that we need to post it publicly, so I'm not gonna address it here tonight, I was hoping I could, but I can't legally. I wanted to say that, but that's where I'm at with this.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second?
One second.
Ready to vote? All in favor? Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. We have one more.
Go back in there.
I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion to go back in the public hearing, okay?
Second.
Second.
All in favor? Go ahead, Jeff.
This is, this is a two-part one, but it's, it is just one, one action. It's a rezoning request to, it's been submitted by C 2 F Investments, Dustin Futch, to rezone 43.44 acres from PUD. This was the old Habersham PUD that has since, it's developed as much as it's going to develop in the original plan with residential use, so now they're selling off the back pieces of the property, and the owners have increasingly come in to change the zoning to either ag or ag residential. In this case, Mr. Futch is asking for an ag residential zoning. He wants to store vehicles and equipment associated with a tree service along this property, and he also wants to use it as a staging area for storm debris. He's also, in addition to the rezoning, he's also asked for a conditional use to be allowed to operate that tree service. This property is located at 3050 Luke Road in unincorporated Liberty County, and you can see there the parcel number. Uh, this property is located at thirty fifty Luke Road, uh, in an unincorporated Liberty County, and you can see there the parcel number. You can see here, we've advertised in the Coastal Courier, and there's a sign that's been posted on the property for some time. And this is the property, that's the outline of the property, this is Luke Road. And this is the forty-three acres that they're wanting to take out of the Habersham PUD and rezone that property for agricultural, uh, residential property use. And this is the overall zoning for the area. Everything you see there in blue is the old Habersham PUD. You can see the area that, up there, that was actually developed in the way it was originally intended. There's a subdivision up there. All the rest of the property is, uh, currently being used as either agricultural or, uh, low-density residential. Okay. And, uh, for the future land use map, the future land use map for this entire area, because it was a residential PUD, is, is shown as low-density residential. And the flood map of the area, you can see here, this property here, uh, some of the property is located in the, in the flood zone area there, but there's the area where they want to, uh, operate the tree service is the upland area. And you can see the wetlands there as well. Uh, there's just a few wetlands in the rear part of the property as well. The narrative, uh, purpose, purpose of this rezoning request is to change, uh, the current zoning designation from PUD, residential PUD, to agricultural, to allow for the operation and expansion of the Summit Tree and Land Solutions, uh, business operated by Mr. Dustin Futch. Summit Tree and Land Solutions is a locally owned business that has successfully operated as a home-based enterprise. They run it out of their home, but they, they are wanting a, a place to store their equipment and to handle some of the material that they take out of, uh, that comes as part of the tree service business. The proposed rezoning will provide the additional space to park vehicles, store equipment, and manage timber while preserving the property's low-impact rural character with surrounding agricultural uses. In addition, the property will serve as a staging and storage area for storm debris following natural disasters, allowing for efficient response and cleanup operations that benefit the wider community. The requested agricultural zoning designation is appropriate based on the size, location, and intended, low den, low intensity of use of the property. The proposed activities are compatible with agricultural and rural service operations. It will not result in adverse impacts on the neighboring properties or local infrastructure. Because the UDO does not include a specific category for tree service, uh, they're asking for the AR, AR1 zoning to allow, along with a conditional use. And that was, that was a recommendation that we made to them when they told us what they wanted to do. This rezoning will ensure that Summit Tree and Land Solutions can continue to provide valuable environmental and emergency response services while preserving the rural character of the area. They just wanted to get you their full explanation of what they're wanting to do there. This is their, uh, concept plan. It's kinda tilted to the side, but this is the area where they want to have the debris storage, and this is a pole building where they want to store the equipment that they use, their trucks and the equipment that they use for their tree service business. And of course, this is Luke Road out here. And it's just a close-up, uh, showing the entrance road coming off of Luke Road here. The area over here is where they want to do this, uh, storm debris storage, and this is the pole building where they want to store the equipment. And it's just some photographs from the site. That's the entrance road. You can see, uh, the storage area over here for the debris and the, uh, the storage building that you saw in the sketch would be over here on the, on the left-hand side. And you can see, just some, some of the ponds that they've created on the property for the storm.
Could you speak up a little bit more, Jeff?
Sorry, I'm sorry. Uh, and this is the area where they've already, they've already cleared the property. Uh, they previously cleared the property before the county came out and told them they needed to get a permit to do what they're doing. And you can see there's a piece of equipment that's, uh, associated with the tree service business. And our zoning analysis, uh, does this property have reasonable economic values as it's currently zoned? It does. Number two, does the property, does the proposed use conform to the, uh, Fort Stewart Joint Land Use Study? It does. Number three, does the proposed use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? Our answer there is yes. The comprehensive plan designates the future, future land use as residential low-density, which AR1 is a compatible zoning district. Number four, will there be adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? There will not. Number five, will there be, is this proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? It's a rural, uh, uh, agricultural area, so we concluded yes that it is. Number six, will the zoning proposal create an undue burden on transportation, streets, public safety, and utilities? It will not. Number seven, will this allow, will this allow a short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals? It will not. Will this change cause a domino effect? It possibly would, because, uh, if, if this, uh, business is allowed here, there may be other similar businesses that would wanna go into the area. Number nine, are there unique historical sites that might be adversely impacted? We have not noted any. Number ten, is the parcel in a flood hazard area, you saw on the map that a portion of the property is located in the Zone A flood hazard area. Number eleven, is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? No. And number twelve, were there unique conditions that support approval or denial, and we have not identified any? Planning Commission heard this at their last month's meeting, and they recommended approval with standard conditions. And Mr. Futch is here, and his engineer is here as well, and I'll be glad to answer any questions before we go into public hearing.
Okay, thanks, Jeff. I have one question. Jeff, if you go back to the narrative, um, the second paragraph, the third sentence from the bottom, where it says, "In addition", it said that, "In addition, the property will serve as a staging, storage area for storing debris following natural disasters." And I remember, um, you know, working with the city, uh, as I do now, that when we had something like that, that we had stored some debris out at, uh, the old airport. So, is, is Mr. Futch, um, is, I mean, is he planning to, um, allow the county, uh, just anybody to store debris out there?
I would need to let him answer that question.
Okay, okay. Yeah, but it said, "In addition",
Right.
Um, I mean, I, I know he's planning on doing something, but he says, "In addition", that it, it could be used for that, and I didn't know if, um, and I guess, um, when we had those Irma and Matthew and those other storms, we had, uh, a area on the east end and on the west end. So, I, I didn't know if, um, if we were looking for additional, I mean, additional space. That's all I had. Any other questions for Jeff before we bring on the?
Jeff? Where would, uh, EPD come in at on this?
Um, I, I think they would only come into play if you were burning. I think they would, you would be required to have some kind of an air curtain, but the, the, when we get to the, uh, when we get to the conditional use part of it, which is the second part of this, you'll find that the Planning Commission recommended that you not allow burning.
Well, the reason why I ask that, 'cause I, I just happened to come down Luke Road on yesterday. And, uh, there was smoke where in the very back. I don't know if they were warming their hands or what, or roasting potatoes.
Yeah.
But there was smoke on the backside, so I assumed that there was a fire out there.
Right. They will, they will have to operate under whatever conditions that you impose on them for the conditional use permit.
Okay. Any other questions for Jeff? Okay, Mr. Mosley, we have anyone sign up for public comment?
I believe Mr. Sax is part of the request.
A man that needs no introduction. But, but give us one.
Appreciate that. I'm Marcus Sax with ME Sax Engineering. Uh, good evening, commissioners. So, just to address a couple of questions. Commissioner Gilliard, um, Dustin is willing to entertain that. Maybe it should've read, you know, "Could be used",
Okay.
Uh, certainly that he's, he's willing to entertain if there needs to be some type of east-end, um, storage facility after a storm. That's something he's willing to do. In addition to, you know, the storm debris that he would collect, probably as a private business.
But, but it wouldn't be like if someone that lived near there and they were just tired of waiting to get the yard cleaned up, and they cleaned it up. They couldn't just hold it out there. They would have to get, get his permission. It just wouldn't be like an open, okay?
It would either be his, his private business or some agreement that he came up with, with the county or, or some other municipality.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
With, with the debris that's already out there and bringing in more debris in a couple of years, what would it look like and what would you do with the debris?
Right. So, the debris that's out there right now was generated on-site from his, uh, clearing operations, which we're trying to get straight, um, with that as well. He's got a stop-work order. Um, he's, he went to the LCPC after that happened. They directed him, uh, to an engineer, and, um, I've known Dustin a long time, but the, the debris there is on-site generated, which is allowed to be burned. It's when you accept trees from off-site that it gets to be questionable as to whether it can be burned or not. So, the off-site debris legally can be chipped, or it can be converted into firewood and sold. Uh, that's the best way to get rid of, uh, tree debris from other properties.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Sax? Marcus, I mean, do you have anything that's else that you?
No, I think the, the presentation covered it. As, as Jeff indicated, there's really, um, not a specific zoning requirement for this type of use. Um, he will be continuing to operate as a, a, a home business from his house, uh, but he needs this room to, to spread out and store vehicles and that sort of thing.
Okay.
Yeah, we appreciate y'all's consideration.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
So, you've seen the special conditions and the standard conditions? Y'all in agreement with all that?
Yes. So, the, the fifty-foot buffer, uh, Mr. Futch has found with the fifty-foot buffer. We would ask that the, the burning requirement not be a special condition. Those are governed by both local and state, um, regulations. And we don't need an additional regulation. For instance, if, if they did go into an agreement, uh, to accept county-wide debris after a storm, um, with that condition on there, they wouldn't be able to burn it, but normally you could burn it with a special permit from EPD. So, we'd wanna have that availability. We think that the local and state regulations control burning well enough.
I've been out there, as you have, Mr. Stevenson, seeing, I was out there two weeks ago, and I know there's been burning, and I was out there yesterday. I didn't know he had been out until I just heard it, but, uh, it looks like there's been some burning still going on. I know we sit here and we don't control that. The state controls burning, giving burning permits and such as that. I'm aware that, uh, Mr. Futch has got several things he needs to get compliant. We're not here to really go into that. That's a whole different level of government. Uh, no, no on-site burning. The only way I could go away from that a little bit is, uh, if Mr. Futch was willing to maybe mulch things up, 'cause I know he's gonna get a lot of debris coming in here, or possibly go with an air curtain burner.
That's right. Uh, the air curtain is something we discussed at the LCPC meeting, and Mr. Futch is agreeable to burn. If, if the special condition allowed burning to only burn with an air curtain. And I did wanna point out, because we got a call from the, the county inspector today, too, about, um, continued burning. We just wanted to point out that that is still the same burning that occurred four weeks ago prior to the stop-work order. Those were just some massive trees and a pretty big pile. So, no additional fires have been started. It's just continuing to burn from that original burn.
I ain't the police. I ain't gonna worry about that one. The only thing that I would add is, uh, it must be with an air curtain burner. If we do something with the burner.
You wanna add, you wanna?
Yeah.
Have them add that? Go ahead.
Yeah, it, uh, one thing I'd like to add, where it says there shouldn't be no on-site burning, I can modify that, or I'm willing to modify that. Guide me where I need to, to add in air curtain burner only.
Right. That would, that would be on the next, the, the second part of this, the, the conditional use. But if you wanna modify that, you should, that's, that's the board prerogative.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for Marcus or, or Jeff? Thanks, Jeff. Um, ready, uh, motion to come out of public hearing?
I'm on that list.
He's on the list? Oh, okay, go ahead.
Uh, I just need a point of clarification, two things. Point of clarification, the stop-work order was for the land clearing or for the burning?
I'm not sure. Marcus is more familiar with that.
The, the, the burning was a product of the land clearing. Um, the, the land clearing, clearing took place and generated the debris that was then burned. Uh, the stop-work order was for all work to stop on-site.
I had a, I'm gonna bring this up to y'all, 'cause I'm Joe Blow. I went down to your building permits, I guess it is, and I asked the question about land clearing. And they basically told me that as long as the land belonged to you, you could basically do what you wanted. What drove me to question them, which goes back to SNF, was doing development work that was, quote, "Same thing that he got stopped for." Alright, that's one. The second question is, and I'm gonna throw this out there. Everything that y'all do as far as buffers between development and residential or people across who it's gonna affect is fifty feet. Y'all are standing, because of the way that the law's written by y'all, which you're gonna revisit, you're saying that a person can't have a chicken coop within three hundred feet. Now, where's the fairness in that? Thank you.
In a residential area, he can't have that, but we off the chicken coop.
Yeah, like I said, fifty feet, thirty feet, uh, three hundred.
If you will let me, I'll help you with a little something.
Sure.
With that clearing part, you can come in and cut timber off your property and everything's fine. But when you start clearing and grubbing it, taking the stumps out and that kinda stuff, if you're over one acre, you have to file an LDA, which is the Land Disturbance Act and everything, and all.
Nothing was done. There was nothing on record downstairs for SNF clearing land. That means, I'm sure they're not gonna be just...
That's not with us local. That's with the state. That's with the state, and all. LDA has to be filed with the state and everything.
Alright. I, I'm not gonna argue it here, because I'm, I'm, I'm at a disadvantage, because I don't law, know the law. I'm just bringing it up to you. What affects one, don't affect another.
As an engineer, but yeah, you're welcome to ask him.
Yeah, thanks.
I'm sure I will.
Okay.
We've met.
Is anyone else, uh, Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir, I see.
Okay. Uh, motion to come out of public hearing?
No move, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
All in favor? Raise your hand, okay. Alright, Jeff.
Uh, Mr. Vice Chairman, this recommendation from the Planning Commission is just for the zoning only, to, to rezone it from PUD to AR1. And they have a favorable recommendation for you.
Okay. They have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we follow LCPC approval, you know.
Second.
It's standard conditions.
Standard, okay. We have, we have a motion and a second. Motion and a second, are ready to vote? All in favor? Raise your hand, say aye. Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you. Okay, the next, uh, wait a minute. Alright. So, the next part is the conditional use request, and we had to, we had to go through the conditional use criteria. Uh, the use shall not adversely affect the economic values or the physical appearance of the neighborhood or the areas surrounding the site or lot in question. We answered that no. Number two, the use shall be consistent with the comprehensive plan and with the purpose and intent of the land use district. We answered yes. The plan designates future land use for this area as residential low density, low density, which the AR1 is a compatible zoning. The establishment, maintenance, and operation of the use shall not be detrimental or endanger the public health, the safety, or general welfare. It will not be detrimental. Number four, the use will not create undue burden on transportation, including streets, transit, schools, utilities, and provision of public, public safety. We answered that no. Number five, the design shall minimize physical, uh, environmental effects on adjacent properties, including adverse visual impact, buffer zones where necessary to shield any adverse factors shall be considered. Uh, we said yes if the buffer requirements are met, and you talked about the buffer requirements. Uh, number six, additional space for parking and landscaping adequate measures for ingress and ingress shall be considered if necessary. We have not identified any. And the Planning Commission heard this one as well, the special use that goes along with the rezoning. And they had two special conditions that they recommended to you. One would be the fifty-foot vegetative buffer shall be maintained around the perimeter of the tree service business. And then number two, there shall be no on-site burning. You are free to accept or reject or modify any of, any of these two conditions.
Okay. That's what you was?
Yes, that's what I'd like to do. Number two, I'd like to change that to where it's air curtain burner only. I don't like to be so hard that it can't burn, which the state's gonna have to govern that. But, uh, if he's willing to get air curtain burner, I'm all for it, you know. Add that to it.
All okay with that, Marcus? Okay. Well, Jeff, if we need to go, go ahead.
Uh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I'll also give them the benefit of the doubt if they wanna do demolition or something, 'cause you're gonna get debris coming in. And, uh, 'cause you're a tree service, you're gonna have stuff coming in, you, you might go in business and let people come and pay you to dump it. So, at one, some point, you gotta either mulch some of it and get rid of it, or you're gonna have to use an air curtain burner. So, I'm okay with both, y'all.
I don't have a problem with it. Okay. You got a motion? You've modified the special conditions?
Demolition is not in there.
Then you come out of the, out of the public hearing first? Are they, are they out of the public hearing?
Brown. Brown.
Okay.
I make a motion, we follow LCPC standard con...
Uh, Mr. Chair, we still have Mr. Cook.
Who is it, cook?
He signed up to speak.
To speak, to speak on this part here, too?
No, sir, I I'm good. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
It uh, I make a motion, we follow LCPC standard conditions and also the special conditions, with the exception of the debris must be, when it needs to be, mulched or burned with an air curtain burner.
Second.
I agree with that. Second.
Motion being approved. And, and, and other questions? All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mosley, new business. Employee holiday, Friday, that's the day after Christmas. Mr. Joe Mosley.
Members of the board, before you ask a request to have administrative day for Friday, December the twenty-sixth.
Sounds good. Okay, so that's, Christmas is that Thursday, the twenty-fifth, and then they'll take the, be the holiday to twenty-sixth as well.
Yes, sir.
Well, are they doing anything the following week for around New Year's?
Only New Year's Day.
Just New Year's Day, and they'll come back in that Friday?
Yes, sir.
It's gonna be a real, real slow, real, well, ain't nobody coming, but we'll see, we'll see. You'll be here? Okay, all right, all right. Okay, okay.
Need a motion on that?
Yeah, we need a motion on that?
Yes, sir, administrative day.
I made that motion last year.
Motion approved, I mean, made in second. Do we have any, any other questions? All in favor of the motion? Raise your hand, vote aye.
Tell them, tell them to enjoy it.
Pass. Yeah, that's a, that's a good thing to do that, okay? Qualifying fees, Mr. Joseph M. Mosley.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, our upcoming, we have districts one, two, and three that will come open for, the seats will be becoming available, not available, they'll be up and up for election. Liberty County Board of Education Chairperson, and then Liberty County Board of Education Districts four, five, and six. Talking to Ms. Waltire, we needed to approve these fees. And for District one, two, and three, that amount has increased from two eight six, or two eighty-two to five oh-four. And the ones for the Board of Education Chairperson and District four, five, and six remain the same at a hundred and eighty dollars. You'll notice also in this resolution, there's scheduled dates in terms of when they're to be advertised. And then also you will have the qualifying, you'll notice starts on Mar- Monday, March the second, twenty-twenty-six, and will end at twelve o'clock noon on Friday, March the sixth, twenty-twenty-six. And we have to do this. Y'all have to adopt the schedule. We have to advertise, and then we can move forward.
Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir.
Would you explain how we got to the five oh-four?
Uh, the way we went to the five oh-four, following the election guideline, has, it's based on three percent of the base salary plus any supplemental benefits, or supplements, not benefits, but supplements. And that's where it increased to five oh-four. This year, the governor, because every year the legislature, unlike the city, on the county side, y'all's salary is based upon formulas that the legislature put in place. A city, on the other hand, can do research, and they can raise their salary by simple vote, but it only goes into effect the next election. But on the county side, y'all are regulated by the state.
Okay.
And it was, it was based on two percent previous, right?
I believe so.
Now it's three percent.
Now it's three percent, yes, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Mosley? And you need a motion for this, Mr. Mosley?
Yes, sir.
Chair, I I make the motion to approve the upcoming twenty-twenty-six qualifying fees for Liberty County Commissioners, District one, two, three, Liberty County Board of Education Chairperson, and also Liberty County Board of Education Districts four, five, and six.
I second it.
Motion's been approved in second. Do we have any other questions? All in favor of the motion? Raise your hand, vote aye.
Mr. Vice Chair, before you move on, since we on that topic, I'm... That I do plan to qualify and ask and seek reelection.
Oh, well, me too. All right. Okay, request to accept annexation resolution from the City of Riceboro, Mr. Paul Simonton, another man who needs no introduction.
Thanks, sir.
That's the money man.
Or me?
The money man.
Oh, well, I'm not sure about that. So I'm here tonight to talk to you guys about, or to answer any questions, really, about the annexation for the City of Riceboro. Do we have that map up here of the area? They have one, too? Okay, all right. So the the city's been approached by by several people about annexation. They've got some, some folks that are doing petitions for, like the Briar Bay area. There's some annexation efforts to the north for the SNF property. But they've also been approached by the property owners at exit sixty-seven and about supplying water and sewer to the area. You know, there's a underground septic tank system down there now that some of those places are using not very successfully. And then I think there's some, some issues with water. So developers from the area have approached the city a number of times to do that. And as all of you know, basically, in order to to annex, by petition or by, you have to join the existing property, I mean, the existing city limits. And right now, the existing city limits of Riceboro goes to the intersection of Seventeen and Retreat Road, and then goes around Sandy Run Road and all. So what this petition does is it picks up at the intersection of Retreat Road and Seventeen, follows Seventeen all the way down to I ninety-five, seven hundred foot on either side of the proper, of the center line of the road. And then once it crosses I ninety-five, then it takes in the developable property on the other side over to the McIntosh County line. With with the thought of basically ultimately getting water and sewer service down to the interchange there once the development gets there that can support the cost of getting it there. So we're, we're, we have submitted what we consider the first annexation petition to go from the existing city limits down to I ninety-five and around to the county there. Any questions about that?
I have one, Paul, and I saw that when you said down to ninety-five, would that include that that McDonald's area? Would that be Riceboro as well?
Yes.
All the way to the McIntosh County line?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it would take all of the property of the McDonald's, even the area behind McDonald's and across the road. And all of that would come into the city limits.
Well, what about, what's the name of that road, Commissioner Stevens, where the Gichi Kunda is? Is that, which is on the left?
Ways Temple.
Ways Temple.
Yeah. Yeah, so the, and what we, as we go down Seventeen, once we go down Seventeen and in that property, I think there is actually a petition going around or something like that for the Ways Temple. Once we get down to that far, then they'll, they'll join us, they'll join the city, and then they can, they can come in and buy a petition at that point.
I mean, it's just Seventeen, so when you turn on the Ways Temple, is that gonna be city as well?
Seven hundred feet.
Back seven hundred feet.
Seven hundred feet, but all the way down to where the Gichi Kunda facility is, that wouldn't be?
That's right adjacent to the seven hundred feet, I think.
Okay, okay. That's the only question I had.
Coming back, going north of the city limits, where would it stop at?
Say again now?
Coming north.
Where does it stop right now?
Yeah, I mean, you know, where would it stop at the proposal? Where would it stop at?
It's stop, it it adjoins the existing city limit at the intersection of Retreat Road and Seventeen.
No, going north.
Oh, going north. So if you go on the north side, the current city limits ends right there at...
At the canal.
Yeah, right. And then, and then the SNF is, has, they're, they're trying to gain a connection to the existing city limits, so they can annex that five hundred and seventy-one acres. Ultimately, we would go to Lewis Fraser Road, where Lewis Fraser Road comes out. And there has been talk about even going on to Peacock Canal, Peacock Creek, where it goes to there. Now, that part of it, though, would be by petition. So once the, once we get SNF property into the, to the city where we provide them water and sewer, then any other property that touched that would be able to petition to come into the city. So that one is gonna be, the plan for that is a little different than the annexation down to the McIntosh County line.
So the City of Riceboro anticipate doing all of this one time, or will there be a A, B section?
So it's, I think it'll be in stages. I think it's gonna be three stages. You know, this one basically is done through the legislative route, my three minutes up. This one's done through, through the legislative route. And then I think that once the SNF property, they'll petition to come into the city. And once that goes, then there's other people that have contacted about just doing it. But they'll be adjoining us once we get to there. And then there's a, there's a third stage that's happening, which is the the people at Briar Bay and Shell Road are, they've actually submitted a petition. It hadn't really checked all the boxes yet. But they're, they're soliciting annexation by petition, and probably that one will be by the sixty percent rule. But at this point, there's, there's, there's not a certainty that they're not creating islands and they're doing that. So, but that, that's kind of on the horizon.
Any other questions for Mr. Simonton?
Just quick, quick question. Do you, do you all have any type of numbers on the anticipation of of how many, I guess, the population change, or how many people coming in, or parcels, or both?
I'm sure the mayor does. But, but I don't, you know, there was, there was, because of the way that the census tracts are done, you know, at the last census determination, they actually lost population because the, those population that they, they, that they were getting credit for were actually turned out to be in some of those, like Ways Temple area and in Briar Bay and that. So I think, you know, it was like they had lost two hundred and forty or two fifty or something like that, you know, it was...
So they at least gained that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question.
Commissioner Blunt?
Yes, sir.
The City of Riceboro, they accepting all this cost on this proposal that they want right now?
I'm sorry, they, they, they accept the...
Are they gonna be assuming all the cost of this?
Well, yeah, so, you know, let me, let me tell, and there's been a lot of, yes, they are at this point. And, and there's been a lot of discussion about that, because, you know, a lot of people come in, and in fact, I had a call. I was on a call with them about a week ago where a developer came in and from sixty-seven. And he said, hey, I need for, for you guys to do this, this, and, and, you know, I told the mayor, I said, the, the money doesn't make sense to do that. So, but yeah, they're, they're getting water and sewer down there, that, the, now, they know that they're not gonna come to you for the cost on that. Now, we, we will probably go to some funding agencies to help the city, but it'll be, it'll be up to them to get the, the services to there.
Long as they not coming to the county.
Well, no, so, yes, sir, but obviously, I, I can't say they'll never come. But the plan is right now, we're trying to make the numbers work, so it does. And the good part about this one is, we're, we're not gonna inherit a bunch of road. It's all DOT route. So that, that's kind of part of it, too.
Any other questions for Mr. Simonton?
The only thing I hate, Paul, about this, there's been no communication with me on this. None.
I'll pass that word along to the folks there.
None.
I'll talk with the mayor about that.
Okay, okay. We need a motion? Let's up this request?
No move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Stevens. Any questions? All in favor? Raise your hand and say aye.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Okay, request to waive the tipping fee for Hines Shaw Development Project, Mr. Joe Mosley again.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, you have before your resolution to waive the fees. Commissioner Geer provided an update that basically the City of Heinzville had received bids to stabilize the historic Hines Shaw School, and that they were looking for ways that they could save some money. And so Commissioner Geer had recommended to you guys to look at possibly waiving some of the fees. And he provided those receipts. If you'll notice, a total of nineteen, one thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. And so at this time, we would recommend that you guys waive those fees. And that would, those would be funds that would not be collected by the enterprise fund of the solid waste. So they wouldn't come from the general fund.
Need a motion on that?
Yeah, uh, no, wait, we have any, you, you good, Joe? We have any questions?
I know. We, we, we've discussed this in...
Yeah, we discussed that last, last time.
Yes, Commissioner Stevens. Yeah, I, I, I wanna add, though, we, I'll send y'all some pictures. The Public Works Department in Heinzville is kind of a joint project. The chairman, Chairman Lover, said that it's, it's a county project, so I'm splush. And we're just looking at ways to, you know, to, to fund it. But I, I took some pictures from some of the work that Public Works did. And if y'all been by there, it looks a whole lot better now after they tore down that, that bus ramp and that walkway and moved it away from the building. And then there was a walkway from the historic school
Right.
to the packed apart by the lunchroom. That's been removed, and it looks like a brand-new building.
Mr. Chair.
I mean, of course, the roof is, the roof is still like a convertible, but, you know, but it's, it looks a lot better. I'll send y'all the pictures today.
I'm gonna do like you do me, I rode there this afternoon, and it's not, not in my district, but it does look good.
Wasn't, wasn't, wasn't nobody warming their hands, wasn't no smoke coming?
No, there wasn't no smoke coming.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we need a motion?
Make that motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote aye. Raise your hand. Thanks, Mr. Mosley. And now we got the approved bid for purchase of the removal of the playground equipment at Suzie King Taylor Freedom Park. Mr. Joe Mosley, once again.
Mr. Chair, we did a sealed bid to purchase and remove the equipment there at Suzie King Memorial Park. As you're aware, that we actually, y'all have approved the purchase of three different playground equipments, and this is one of them. Looking at the other two parks, the equipment wasn't worth, but this one, the department, the equipment still was in pretty decent shape, and so we put it out sealed bid. We had five, if you notice in the list, we had some vendors, but they basically didn't understand the lesson or, or instructions. And it was only really one group, and that was the Isle of Wight Community Club, that understood that it was a acquisition and demolition. And they bid a total of five hundred dollars, and we would recommend that you guys go with that group.
Mr. Chair, I did just have one question for Mr. Mosley.
Yes, sir.
This is the same one that we had to...
Reject.
Right, reject.
Because they didn't understand the instructions. Yes, sir.
First time?
Yes, sir.
And then we put it back out?
Yes, sir.
Until they didn't understand the assignment?
They still didn't understand the assignment.
Was it, was it the same language, or?
No, we changed the language. We made sure it was purchased and removed.
So the, the language was, was, was changed, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, that, that was all that I, that I have.
Make that motion, Chair.
Any other questions for Mr. Mosley?
Oh.
Okay. Does it like, have a motion?
Right, second.
Motion by Commissioner Stevens, second by Commissioner Fraser. Any other questions? All in favor of the motion? Raise your hand, say aye.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Since we talking about the playground, I was, it was mentioned to me that the playground equipment should be here sometime this week for...
I'll give you the report, sir.
Go ahead. All right, good.
Okay, now we, that's all on that one, to have the intergovernmental agreement for the Heinzville Downtown Development Project.
Mr. Chair, County Attorney told me that that wasn't ready, and we asked that y'all take that off. Yes, sir, I'm sorry I didn't mention that earlier.
Did or not? Because I was ready to table it anyway.
Yeah, yeah, we, we could do that. Yeah, you were saying that, that we go hurry up and get out of here. We, we got, we got two big elections today. big elections today, the, the one in Midway, but the one that's most important is the, the football poll, and I want to know if Texas gonna get in. I, I hope, if Texas get in, they gonna win it. If Texas get in, they gonna win it, I'm telling you now.
Because I, I, I heard Auburn, Auburn's not gonna make it, huh?
They, they Auburn fans back there? Arch.
Okay, go ahead.
Arch Manning, just, just one, two words. Okay, Mr. Mosley, administrative reports.
Yes, sir. Couple things, Mr. Chair, members of the board, on the fire and rescue, the recruit class number seven graduation will be held on December 19th at 6:30. Right now, they're trying to secure the location, and we'll be, staff will be making sure to go, you all get an invitation. Recruit class number eight will start on January the 7th, so they continue to move forward. And then the annual fire department awards will be held on January 16th at 6:00 PM at Samuel Harris Gym. Also, the chief will be bringing y'all mutual aid agreements, I think at the 19th meeting for y'all's consideration. Under solid waste, I am happy to report that the City of Walterville has paid up all fees completely.
Autographing ticket.
Also, we're reminded that the Christmas parade that we held on Friday, December the 5th, starting at 6:00 PM, and I believe they want everyone to be at the site, the starting area, at 5:00 PM. Under our human resources, staff is kicking off our performance review process, will be utilizing new pay, velocity payroll system, and Laura and staff will be providing two workshops to help people understand how to work. And all performance reviews will be due on January 15th. Reminder, our appeal hearing on the personnel matter will be tomorrow at 4:00 PM. And also, want to make sure you guys attend our annual employee service awards program on Friday, December the 12th at 12, I mean, at 12 o'clock PM. And then on the parks and wrecks, Commissioner Stevens was sharing with us, our, the three playground equipments will be here on Friday, and they will, those parks, as a reminder, will be Briar Bay, Jesse Stevens, and then we will use Susan King Taylor as the last one. And we want to allow them to remove this playground equipment. I believe that Mr. Gross is getting with Mr. Clint to remove the playground equipment from the other parks, but you will see some beautiful playground equipment that will be installed in the, in the three parks. And that ends my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Two things, go ahead, Jeff.
I'm looking at the time.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Stevens very, very well tonight.
Real quickly, just to, for those who are still listening, be advised that Bakentown Road is not completed, but it is, it is open. And also, the bridge on Lewis Frazier is still closed, we're waiting on DOT to come cut the safety grooves on the side of the road.
Good to hear.
Mr. Mosley, I mentioned yesterday, groundbreaking, we, we talked about it a while back, and I know the Chairman, Chairman Lovett is not here, but we can discuss it, I think, there's five of us here, and, you know, just, you know, if it's something that we're interested in or not. But we did talk a couple of months ago about maybe considering a, an incentive program for the, for CDL drivers, and, you know, and if, if that's not nothing that we want to entertain, then, you know, I promise I'll never bring it up again, but I, I do need to know if, if that's something that we want to entertain, and if not, then, you know, we just move on to the next, you know, live the fight another day.
Well, I have not spoken to the Chairman, but we did, Laura reached out to our payroll consult, I mean, our, our personnel consultants, and they were very complimentary, they thought it'd be something positive for us to do. So she, she reached out today and they responded.
So we just have further discussions on?
We could talk to Chairman and then get with you guys.
Work session or something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And that's all you have?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mosley?